So, good morning. Is it okay for me to start, Teri? Okay, so.
Yes.
Okay, so, good morning. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees Executive Committee Meeting to order this morning. Today is June the 16th and it is by my clock 11:01 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the Board Liaison Teri Lucas to review the meeting procedures and protocols. Teri?
Good morning and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, Board Liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, calbright.org, under About Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q&amp;A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded.
So, thank you. We're now going to proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm wondering if our Vice President would lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely, Pam. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you so much for that. I want to just discuss a little bit the order of the agenda. We will be having a closed session this morning. Are there any board members that wish to either pull or change anything from the existing agenda? I don't see any waving of hands and stomping of feet, so I think we can proceed. So, I'm going to keep my President's report short and brief. We are all sort of waiting, to be really honest, with the budget. This was a year where the state had lots of one-time dollars and we thought, oh, it's going to be, you know, smooth sailing. I believe that yesterday we would have had a signing, but that is sort of not the case. There's some wrangling going on and so I'm hoping that before too soon, before too long, I should say, that we will have a budget that our community colleges, Calbright included, but our 115 other colleges can move forward on a lot of reform and changes that need to happen within the system. So, with that, I'm going to turn the mic over to our President Minyon and she will give her report. You're on mute.
Ajita, you're on mute. Thank you.
That's okay.
Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Board of Trustees. Even in the few short weeks since we last met, Calbright has continued to make steady and consistent progress on several of our major institutional work streams. We are finalizing our strategic operational plan to progress toward accreditation, which is ahead of schedule. We continue to be on track with our responses to the California State Auditor and next month we'll give the Board a preview of our August milestone report showing that we have met or exceeded all statutory benchmarks for the year. We come together at a moment of great uncertainty for our country, our state, and our system, but also a real moment of hope as the economy reopens and families are reunited of the fear of this last year. The Biden Administration has delivered state and local assistance to stabilize the economy and lay a solid foundation for recovery. Governor Newsom's proposed investments in the updated May revised recognize the vital role that community colleges play in serving adult learners throughout the state. His budget proposals seek to remove many of the impediments our students face on a daily basis. At the same time, his administration is looking for better regional alignment where training and education can ultimately lead to jobs. And while California officially reopened for business yesterday, the governor had repeatedly emphasized that many of our regions and employment industries will take longer to recover from the pandemic. And just last week, we saw data from the National Student Clearing House that showed that this spring the country saw one of the steepest enrollment declines they've seen in a decade with California leading the nation, 123,000 students, or a 5.3% decline in enrollment. And we all know that that's felt, that decline is felt in community college enrollments. It counts for a large majority of this loss, which is in line with what we're seeing in pandemic effects nationally. The stories we saw across our student population at Calbright were true for many across the system. Forty-one percent of students in the CCC system experienced a change in employment during the pandemic. Almost 20% had their work hours reduced. Twenty-two percent were furloughed or laid off, and more than half of students reported that their income had actually decreased. Fifty-seven percent, we know, faced basic needs insecurity, and we know that that group actually was disproportionately made up of students of color. And when we dig into that data on enrollments, these disproportionate impacts are born out of who is dropping out of higher education and also who is dropping out of the economy across the board. And we know that those inequities are being exacerbated. These are alarming trends and they reflect exactly warnings we have been issuing to the legislature and partners across the state for months as we highlight not just the urgency, but the necessity of the work underway at Calbright. We are proud that our student body reflects the diversity of the state and we have invested in supports to address the barriers that they've faced in this pandemic, from supporting technology needs for our students and those at rural sister colleges, to providing mental health resources and targeted supports. And our strategic vision includes a laser focus on growing our student population with a careful eye towards reaching these populations who have faced the greatest type of barriers. In May, we went into the field to test one of the concepts that the marketing team presented to the board last month, and I just wanted to say that some of those findings have really stuck with me. Within our focused population, the theme that was most compelling for people is one that is central to our work at Calbright, and I quote, "Success is already inside you." And that is the belief that drives us every day. Our students come to us with the skills and talents and experiences that enrich our college and will support them through their programs and beyond. And the tagline that they chose for our college speaks directly to that. Start here and succeed anywhere. Our students have the skills and the drive to succeed at Calbright and continue to make valuable contributions in the workforce and to our state. I cannot tell you how many times that optimism, how many times I face down questions even from those friendly to our cause saying, you know, can these students learn online? We must bring to our work the same optimism and hope that our students come to Calbright with in their first moments interacting with the college. This belief that this college could open the door to a better future for me and for my family, that on top of all of the responsibilities I'm juggling, I can do this too, and that Calbright, the college itself, believes in me. As we turn the corner on the pandemic, we remain really centered in that spirit, not naive to the challenges facing our learners, but intentional and persistent in addressing them. We're also doggedly optimistic that we can do these very hard things together. To close, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and the entire Executive Committee of the Board for your unwavering belief and support of these very learners.
Thank you so much. I want to back up. Teri, can you call the roll? I think we now have all of our trustee, our Executive Committee here, so would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo. Amy Costa.
President.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jolena Grande.
Here.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Here, along with my non-voting husky in the background.
Bill Rawlings.
I'm present.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. We are now going to move into closed session. The Board will discuss three items in closed session. Item 2.1 regarding employment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Subdivision B. Item 2.2, Public Employee Disciplines/Dismissal/Release pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, and Item 2.3 regarding Conference with Labor Negotiator under Government Code Section 54957.6. So, can we move into closed session at this time? Thank you. During closed session, so thank you so much. I now want to to, I believe I have to ask the question, is there any public comment at this point? It's not on my script, but I believe I do. Do you see any hands?
No public comment, President Haynes.
Okay, thank you. So, then I would like to go into the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve 3.1 and 3.2 of the consent?
I'll move approval.
Okay. By Grande.
I'll second. This is Agnaldo.
And seconded by Member Aguinaldo. So, can I get a roll call?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
He'll be joining us in a few minutes and.
Okay. Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you so much. We're now moving to our action agenda. The first item is 4.1, the approval of administrator appointments, and I have Mr. Grady from Human Services.
Good afternoon, and President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and Board of Trustees. I would like to present to you that Calbright College HR and administrators have undertaken a formal hiring process for recruiting and selection of candidates for the executive position of Vice President of External Affairs, Marketing, and Communications. We are seeking your approval for the appointment of Brendan O'Callaghan as the new Vice President of External Affairs and Marketing Communications with an effective date of July 8th of 2021. So, thank you for your consideration and approval for this new appointment.
So, thank you for that. Do we have any questions from our Board of Trustee members on this particular item? I don't see any hands raised, so then I would then accept the motion and a second.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Rawlings, and can I get a second, please?
I'll second it. This is Member Grande.
Seconded by Grande. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein. Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
And I noticed that Tom has joined us. Can we ask for his vote?
Tom Epstein.
Oh, maybe he hasn't. I just see his name. Okay, so he hasn't, he's not quite there yet, so.
Motion does still carry.
All right, thank you so much. 4.2 is our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Resolution, and we have Tamika Connor, Senior VP of Strategic Initiatives. Tamika, you want to present?
Yes, thank you, President Haynes. As a member of one of the most diverse institutions in higher education in the nation, the California Community College System Leadership feels that it is imperative to affirm our commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and anti-racism, and take action. Calbright is seeking to join our peer community college districts in adopting a local resolution in support of diversity, equity, and inclusion. In April of 2021, Chancellor Oakley requested that college leaders in partnership with District Board of Trustees adopt the presented DEI sample resolution where we can highlight action-oriented approaches to how we move beyond recognition to these practices. The request is that we adopt the DEI sample resolution in its entirety as a sign of our commitment to engaging in activities that support diversity, equity, and DEI training, fostering a climate of inclusion, and ensuring our equity plans support student success. The resolution is aligned with Calbright's mission, three-year strategic vision, and targeted student populations. Within the last year, Calbright's highlights of action-oriented approaches in support of diversity, equity, and inclusion include the adoption of Board Policy 3400 on diversity, equity, and inclusion. It also includes forming the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force, drafting Calbright's EEO Plan, and participation in professional development in creating an anti-racist institution, including Membership in USC Racial Equity Leadership Alliance. Recently, Calbright launched in May of 2021 our DEI Task Force, which created a community and practice workshop that is held monthly at Calbright to learn and grow with each other in areas of anti-racism, cultural competency, and equity-minded practices. Calbright is pleased to join our partner colleges in taking steps to ensure our work in equity, diversity, and inclusion continues to support dynamic learning communities for our students and our employees. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have any board member questions or comments? So, we have, we're gonna, I'm going to defer to our President/CEO Minyon.
I just, I think Tamika highlighted all of the good work that went to this on the EEO Plan we're building and just the sort of steps forward we are taking as an institution culturally, but I did want to take this moment to just publicly thank the work of the DEI Task Force. It is a very committed and cross-sectional group at the college and, you know, the work that they're doing is very important because they're doing it from the perspective of how we become better leaders in our institution in order to serve the populations we are focused on serving even better. And it all comes from that very student-centered orientation, that very population-focused orientation, and I'm just so appreciative.
Thank you for that. Board Member Aguinaldo?
Thank you, President Haynes. Just one comment and one question. My comment is that this is exceedingly well-written. Thank you very much for the work that went into this. My question is, is there opportunity, or do you think it's appropriate for us to include anything about any substantive coursework in anti-racism? Into this particular resolution?
So, let me confirm that not just one or two of the Calbright staff worked on this. I think a half a dozen people did and made significant amount of changes to it.
Thank you.
It was, and when I read all of those changes, let me tell you, and I think that the changes were good, where the important portions of this from my perspective is in the BEAT resolves, because the BEAT resolves, that's where the work has to happen. That's what we're promising to do. This went to 116 colleges and it is that, and it's there that people kind of hold their breath. And if we really do understand what a resolution is, it is a commitment to take action. Not all colleges took the time, will be taking the time, or have taken the time sometimes, to really, you know, a resolution is you just, you know, do this and you do that and you send it off, and nobody picks that back up and says, okay, we promised, this is a promissory note to do the work. And so, I think that what I saw happening here at Calbright was the promising to do the work, the commitment to do the work. So, I would leave as is. Obviously, there is always, you know, opportunities for change. What I do know, Los Rios is in the process of completing its resolution, and we're trying to take that. There's things that we are doing, and things that we need to do, but what has been, what's critical is that this resolution came out, system-wide. It's sort of, it, you, there are going to be some who won't take it seriously, but there are going to be a heck of a lot more who do, who have recognized the last year and a half and re-looked at our institutions and said, we've got to do something differently. And so, many of them will take this resolution, it is my hope, and will take this resolution and say, okay, this is how we're going to move forward. Every, almost every college district has spoken to anti-racist, we have it in our values, we have it in our work groups. We have, we are process-oriented, and I'm sorry, taking so long, but this is, like you, Hildy, this is so near and dear to my heart in terms of where we need to go as a system, where we need to go on our campuses. But the actual importance is about when we actually are taking the actions, when we actually are going to be intentional. And so, that's where we need to hold each other's feet to the fire. So, I want, again, I like Ajita, I want to thank everyone who put the work into this resolution. It's a piece of paper. Let's be very clear, it's a piece of paper. It finds life on our college campuses, it finds life in the work that each one of us does, every single staff, no matter where, no matter what the standing, this is not just about faculty, this is about classified, this is about the custodians, this is about the security people on our campuses, this is about all of us. So, if we embrace, no matter what the words say, if we embrace the actual work, then we will be so much farther ahead. And that should have been my report earlier today, but so please, I appreciate, I appreciate the time to say that. With that said, are there any other questions or comments relative to this particular resolution? I see no, I see no hands up, so I'd like to get a motion and a second on this item.
President Haynes, there is no public comment as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for reminding me, Teri. No public comment, so can I get a motion in a second, please?
I'll move to approve.
Rawlings approves as the motion, and can I get a second?
I'll second. This is Agnaldo.
And trustee Aguinaldo, seconds. Can I get a roll call?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande. She did have to step away.
Okay.
For a minute.
We'll come, and we'll come back and get their votes, please.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
I think Jennifer Perry also had to step out.
Yes, that sounds like it. All right, so thank you so much. I assume that motion carried?
Yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. We're now moving to item 4.3, which is the Calbright College's Board Policy Revision, and we have Cynthia Smith from Legal presenting on this. Cynthia?
Thank you and good afternoon, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Board of Trustees. Today, we are presenting Revised Board Policy 2710 Regarding Conflicts of Interest. This board policy was originally adopted by the Board back in January of 2019, and since then, Calbright has received federal grant funds. As a result, Calbright is required to revise its BP 2710 in order to comply with procurement guidelines and regulations applicable to agencies who receive federal funds. We also took this opportunity to make the conflict of interest policy a bit more robust by including additional language applicable to both the Board and employees regarding reporting financial interests, incompatible activities, and the receipt and reporting of gifts. And I am happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Do we have any questions or comments from our board members? I don't see any. Then then let me, let me do what I was supposed to do before. Is there any public comment?
President Haynes, there is no public comment.
Okay, then can I get a motion to approve and a second, please?
Ah, Costa and then Rawlings will second.
All right, moved by Costa and seconded by Rawlings. Can I get a roll call?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande. Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
The motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you so much. We are now down to information, items, and reports. Our first is 5.1, which is the third quarter 2020-2021 financial update and draft of the 2021-22 budget, and we have Jeff Bell, Chief Financial and Administrative Officer. Jeff, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Madam Vice President and Trustees, presenting you the Third Quarter Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Financial Update and the Draft of the 2021-22 Budget. Next slide, please. This is our agenda, excuse me, for this afternoon. We're going to provide an overview for Calbright and the preparation and timeline for the budget as well as our third quarter fiscal year update. Then we'll have the draft itself, our approach, and some of our next steps and highlights. Next slide, please. Next slide, thank you. Consistent with the Board's vision, the 2021-22 budget is in its first year of a three-year plan consistent with the strategic vision that has been outlined in previous presentations. The budget before you is aligned with the state's efforts also to help with communities and populations that are emerging from considerable economic uncertainty. And so, what you'll see before you is designed to address those communities and help them economically, come out of the stress that has happened over the past several years, and navigate that economic uncertainty. Next slide, please. Preparation and timeline. Budget before you today is in keeping with Board policies as well as Title V Regulations and the Community Colleges Budget and Accounting Manual, and is consistent with the long-term strategic commitment of the college. It also has a 5% general fund balance reserve that is consistent with Board policies. Next slide, please. Just to be consistent with our timelines, as you will recall, back in March, we had a presentation for you that delineated where we would be throughout this year. We had several Budget Advisory Committee meetings. We'll be having a few more. Where we had several budget advisory committee meetings. We'll be having a few more before we're finished with our process. And today, we're at our June tentative budget adoption timeline, or I'm sorry, we're in, we're at budget adoption on the June timeline. Next slide, please. Third quarter, third quarter financial update. Let's take a look at where we're at. Beginning balance, for the beginning balance of the year for third quarter, we started at two thou, two million dollars, ninety thousand, hundred and sixty-two. At the third quarter, you can see, this is in the second column at the bottom of the column, we're at eight point two million dollars. We are projecting that we will end the third quarter, I'm sorry, we'll end the year at four point five million dollars. We're anticipating we'll spend about thirty-five percent more of our resources in this fiscal year to get to that point. So we're going from the eight point two million dollars that you see at the bottom of the second column to the four point five million dollars that you see at the bottom of the third column. That would give us the ending balance at four point five million dollars. Next slide, please. Heading, heading into the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, let's talk a little bit about our approach for the coming fiscal year. As we mentioned earlier, we're heading into the first year of a three-year implementation of the strategic vision for providing high-quality growth for our students in the next three years. This is going to be planning a mix of stable and ongoing resources to meet these goals. And also investing in implementing partnerships and high-quality, competency-based education and marketing for the college. Next slide, please. To do that, we have annual and one-time funds delineated in front of you on this slide. They show a beginning balance of about five point two million dollars at the top of the first column. Moving forward through the second column with one-time funds of approximately thirty-eight million dollars, you'll see almost thirty-nine million dollars at the bottom of the second column to a total of, expenditure total of forty-one, almost forty-two million dollars at the third column, keeping us with a contingency reserve of five point one percent in keeping with board policies. This has salaries, non-academic salaries, and benefits all delineated on it in each one of the columns, as you can see. Our salaries, the total we expect for academic salaries will be about three point two million. Non-academic salaries, I'm on the third column, of eleven point six million. And benefits about five point five, and operating expenses of about twenty-seven point two. Next slide, please. So what are we planning to utilize those resources for? Well, this budget includes investments in workforce and learning and instruction, as well as student services to launch high-quality competency-based, competency-based education pathways while expanding external partnerships. We're also spending on technical and digital investments, modernizing our digital infrastructure, and investing in our student information systems. Next slide, please. And invests also in marketing, as things we've talked about earlier today, with targeted and concentrated efforts to reach our priority populations, those in need. Finally, we invest in administration, administrative compliance, increasing our operational capacity in these areas, and improving procedures and training, which we've talked about, particularly associated with some of the things that have happened this year. Next slide, please. So what are our next steps? Well, the next steps will be, we'll bring you a final budget presentation in July twelfth at that board meeting, which will also be our public hearing. That'll be at the same meeting, with the final budget adoption on August eleventh. At this point, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have. I think you're on mute, Madam Chair.
So sorry. I see Tom's hand raised.
Thank you. Um, I, I have a question. When you, on the slide that has the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and there are the columns for annual funding and one-time funding. I, I was curious how you differentiated between annual and one-time funding on issues like salaries, benefits, operating expenses. I mean, how do you apportion those to operating versus one-time, and, and why?
Sure. What we try to make sure we delineate to the best extent possible is utilizing one-time resources for one-time or building, um, building expenses. And what I mean by building expenses are expenses that are building on the capacity of the college over the next several years. And those would be one-time in nature. And ongoing expenses would be things that would be more of the annual column or things that we know are going to be continuing along those lines. So to the extent we can, and most, and, and most, most as rigidly as possible, we try to keep them into those two columns. So that's why, for example, you'll see much more of the expenditures in the one-time nature because we think, we still have a large, larger contingency of one-time funds. And we're utilizing those funds to build out on our seven-year plan that we have ultimately to use those funds. I hope that's helpful.
Um, I can, I can add a little bit more context to that, which, which might, which might help. So there's several categories of areas pursuant to parts of the statute where there is a clear description of the one-time funds, including things like multi-year implementation of our foundational technology systems, the creation, research, development of a lot of the core programmatic launches that we will do over time. All of those will likely have a combination of funds that will go towards contracting supports, towards some aspect of the operations, and also will likely have FTE costs associated with it for the period of time we are in the stage of organizational development that we're in. So the, the, there are, over time, we will also begin to see, as our revenue increases on the ongoing side of the house, um, those activities that will move from a build to a set for, to a space of stabilization and then scale, which will then be a more routine part of our organizational functions and move over to the one-time side. There will be other categories of activities that were, that will simply conclude at the, at the, at the market which the project is completed.
Thanks. I, I would appreciate when we consider the whole, the budget in July to have significantly more specificity on
Yes.
on how those, you know, either how those decisions are made, or what, you know, what particular expenses are assigned to each because it's, this is something that has perplexed me from day one. And, and I, I just think we need to have more detail to understand it.
Absolutely. I think that's absolutely fair, and we're, uh, we are actually developing a lot of that detail as we get further into our implementation planning as well.
Thank you for that question. Um, are there any other questions of our trustees? By your trustees? I don't see any other, um, any other hands raised. This is a, an information item, and obviously, we, we will come back with the final budget at one of our next meetings. Um, so with.
We do have a.
A public comment?
Public, yes. Eric Cal, Jumachi.
Uh, good afternoon, President Hayes, Vice President Costa, President Menon, and members of the Executive Committee. My name is Eric Cali Maggi. I'm the President of the Community College Association, which is the higher education affiliate of the California Teachers Association. If you go to the website of one of the hundred and fifteen other community colleges and do a search for budget, you will find a document that usually runs somewhere in the fifty to one hundred page range that has detailed information on the income sources of the institution and the expected expenses of the institution. At some colleges, this document even goes down to the department or division level. I've requested multiple years that Calbright's budget, both the adopted and the draft, be available. So far, they have not been. They do not exist on Calbright's website. They have not been provided. While you do have a nice PowerPoint presentation that summarizes the budget, this is not the budget. This particularly matters when you're in periods of substantial growth. If you look at the proposed budget for next year versus the actuals and expected for this year, you're anticipating more than a doubling of your salaries and benefits and the increase of other expenses by merely, by nearly sixfold. Please publish budget information as your peer colleges do. And please pay particular attention to the expenses as Calbright continues to grow. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other, um, public comments?
There are no other public comments, President Haines.
Thank, thank you so much. Um, as I said, that, that, this is a, a informational item. So we are going to go to the next item, which is five point two, Reports on Contracts and Purchases. And Jeff Bell, this is your item as well.
Thank you, Madam President. The contracts and, and expenditures item lists new contracts, new amendments, and term extensions. The contracts list itself will provide you a summary of academic tutors, strategic planning, healthcare pathways, marketing services, and mentorship programs on it. You'll notice in particular a variety of increases and, and extensions. In particular, you'll notice the census contract, which was approved by the Board of Trustees in January thirteen, twenty twenty. This is an extension at no cost with no additional fiscal impact to you. Reason I point it out is because it's a rather large sum of one point seven million dollars.
Are there any questions from our trustees regarding this particular item? Any comments? I don't see any hands raised. Is there any public comment on this item?
President Haines, there is no public comment.
Thank you. Um, so we are now down to our last item. It's a public forum. So is there anyone who wants to give public comment in the public forum?
There is no public comment.
Well, then, um, then I would say that this meeting is adjourned. So I want to thank my colleagues for your time, and I look forward to seeing you soon.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.